Mr. Mayor, it is 5:30.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We will open this meeting tonight. Welcome everybody to the Tuesday, February 22nd, special meeting of the San Mateo City Council. Calling this meeting to order, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Galthos told me he is en route in his car. We will be joining by his phone. Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappin?
Here.
And Mayor Bonilla?
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm going to read the special COVID health orders. Due to the health orders in place at this time, we're holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. So tonight, we have one agenda item, and this is the new state housing law SB 9, Senate Bill 9. And we have our associate planner Laura Richstone here to present.
Thank you.
Let me add one thing. Importantly, tonight, there will be no vote. This is for discussion only. Thank you.
May I share my screen? Are you able to see?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Good evening, councilmembers and members of the public. My name is Laura Richstone, and I am an associate planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight, I will be providing an overview of Senate Bill 9, SB 9, and I'm seeking feedback and direction on five policy areas to help aid in the preparation of a local SB 9 ordinance and code amendment. So a quick note on the structure of this presentation before I dive in. I'm going to start with a brief overview of SB 9, including qualifying criteria, the types of projects that can be carried out under this bill, and then I'll be moving into the five policy questions that we're seeking guidance on. So diving right in. SB 9 is a state housing law that went into effect at the beginning of this year. It amended California planning law to require the ministerial approval of up to two primary units on a single-family zone parcel. And it also... Oh, and a note. Moving forward, I will refer to that type of development as a two-unit duplex development. SB 9 also amended the subdivision map act to require the ministerial approval of certain urban lot splits on qualifying single-family zones parcels. Both two-unit duplex development and urban lot split development projects have to adhere to objective standards, such as daylight planes and setbacks. And because they're ministerial projects, they would require no public hearings, discretion, or environmental review. Under SB 9, projects can only be denied if written findings are made that the project would pose an adverse impact to codified objective health and safety standards and where there is no feasible method of mitigation. So general qualifying criteria. To be eligible for any type of SB 9 project, parcel has to be located in an R1, single-family zone district and cannot be located in a historic district or an historic property. Furthermore, SB 9 projects cannot result in the demolition of affordable housing, rent-controlled housing, or any other housing or unit that has been occupied by a tenant within the last three years. This was included in the state law as a way to prevent tenant displacement and the conversion of affordable units to market rate units. In addition, two-unit development, duplex development projects that do not involve a subdivision cannot result in the demolition of more than 25% of a structure's exterior walls. And I'll get more into this later in my presentation. And this demolition limit does not apply to SB 9 urban lot split projects, only duplex development projects. So now that I've given a little brief overview of SB 9 and its qualifying criteria, I'll move into the two main types of SB 9 projects. So starting with two-unit duplex development SB 9 projects, what can be built? Under SB 9, a two-unit development, a two-unit duplex development project that does not involve a lot split can build up to four units per property. That's two primary units, either attached or detached, one ADU, either attached or detached, and one JADU located within the primary residence. A two-unit duplex development project is subject to objective zoning and subdivision standards. However, no city standard can be imposed that would preclude a unit size of at least 800 square feet for the main unit or an ADU, or preclude a unit size of 500 square feet for a JADU. So for two-unit duplex development projects, SB 9 establishes a minimum four-foot rear and side yard setback, similar to the state's ADU requirements. And no setbacks are required if a structure is removed and rebuilt in the same place. SB 9 also establishes separate parking standards. So a maximum of one parking stall can be required per primary unit. However, no parking can be required if a property is located within a half-mile walking distance of El Camino, one of the city's Caltrain stations, or a major bus stop that has an intersection of two bus routes with 15-minute headways during the morning and evening commute hours, which is essentially El Camino, or if the property is located within one block of a vehicle car share. Per state law, any unit created under SB 9 is limited to residential use only and cannot be used for short-term rentals of less than 30 days. So the other major type of project that can be carried out under SB 9 is an urban lot split. So what can be built under an urban lot split? Under state law, if a lot is split and a two-unit development, two-unit duplex development project is proposed, a minimum of two units are allowed per lot. So two on each lot. This would be four units total. Local jurisdictions can be more permissive and allow up to four units per lot by potentially allowing additional ADUs or JADUs. And we'll get into that later on one of the policy questions we're asking guidance on. Allowing four units per lot would allow a cumulative eight potential units within the confines of the original parcel. Under SB 9, urban lot splits must result in parcels that are roughly equal in size with a maximum 60-40 split differential. And on top of that, each resulting parcel must be at least 1,200 square feet in size. And required parking for urban lot split projects is the same as what is required for two-unit duplex development projects, which is a maximum of one space per primary unit. And no parking required if the parcel is located within a half-mile walking distance of a high-quality transit corridor, El Camino, a major transit stop like Caltrain, or within one block of a car share. In addition, per state law, sequential lot splitting using SB 9 is prohibited. And urban lot split applicants are also required to sign an affidavit stating that they intend to use one of the units as their primary residence for at least three years from the date that the lot split is approved. This was included in the state law to prevent large-scale lot splits by professional developers and speculation. In addition, units created under SB 9 lot splits are limited to also residential units, residential uses only, and cannot be used for short-term rentals. And in addition, corrections of existing non-conforming zoning conditions cannot be required as a condition of lot split approval per SB 9. So now that I've provided a very brief overview of SB 9, the major types of development projects that can be carried out under SB 9 and their associated development standards, I'm going to move into the five specific policy areas that staff is seeking guidance and policy feedback on. Staff is seeking high-level guidance in these areas where the state still allows some local flexibility. And the feedback gathered tonight will provide direction for staff as we move forward with drafting a local SB 9 ordinance. So the first area of requested guidance revolves around demolition limits. So under SB 9, unless allowed by a local jurisdiction, there is a 25% demolition limit of a structure's existing interior walls, or exterior walls, excuse me. This limit applies only to two-unit duplex development projects and does not apply to projects that propose an urban lot split. So our current city practices are that if a project proposes 50% or more of the demolition of a structure, a special use permit is required. If that structure is also 50 years or older and historic evaluation is conducted under that special use permit. And then conversely, projects that propose less than 50% demolition are approved ministerially through a building permit. So the major question we're queuing up for you today is, staff would like to know if the 50% demolition limit should remain the same or be increased? And then if increased, to what extent or percentage should that limit be increased to? And increasing demolition limits could potentially lead to less preservation of the existing forms of structures, but could also potentially allow greater feasibility in creating attached units by giving property owners more flexibility in their choices. So the next guidance area involves urban lot splits and additional ADUs and/or JADUs. So when a project proposes an urban lot split, local jurisdictions can restrict the development potential of each lots to two units, so four units total. For example, if an applicant is proposing an urban lot split and a two-unit duplex development, the city is not required to allow an ADU or a JADU on either lot and can restrict the development potential of each lots to two primary units. If an applicant is proposing only a lot split and they're not proposing a duplex development as well, then the city can also restrict the development potential of each lot to two units. However, these two units can be any kind of dwelling unit. It can be a primary unit, ADU, and/or a JADU. However... So two units per lot is really the minimum required per state law. Sorry. However, so SB 9 does grant local jurisdictions the ability to allow additional ADUs and/or JADUs on urban lot split parcels if the jurisdiction so requires or desires. If a local jurisdiction allows additional ADUs or JADUs on lots, the development potential for each lot would increase, could increase from two units on each lot to four units on each lot. This would be eight units in total. The state recognized that potentially building up to four units on smaller lots with reduced parking and setback standards may not be appropriate for every jurisdiction and built some flexibility into the law so that this can be decided locally. So to provide a little further context and to help guide the question queued up below, staff would like to add that the single-family zoned lots in the city range from an average size of 19,700 square feet in the R1 zoning district area, 7,000 square feet in the R1B zoning district area, and about 5,200 square feet in the R1C zoning district area. So with that background, staff is seeking policy guidance on if the development potential of SB 9 urban lot split projects should be kept at two units per parcel or if additional units, ADUs and/or JADUs should be allowed. If more than two units are allowed per parcel, the follow-up question we would have is, how many units should be allowed? Should we allow three units per parcel or four? And then what type of units would those be or should those be? Should it be ADUs only, JADUs, or both? So the third area staff is seeking guidance on is a potential unit size or floor area limitations for SB 9 units. Under SB 9, cities must allow a unit size of at least 800 square feet for primary units and ADUs and cannot impose development standards that preclude that 800 unit size, 800 square foot unit size. In the city, each zoning district contains FAR regulations, which is used to control the maximum size/square footage of development. In the R1, single-family zoned districts, these FAR standards are based on the size of the parcel. The bigger parcel you have, essentially, the more square footage you're allowed to build. However, regardless of the size of a parcel, the city has also set a maximum FAR/size limit of 6,000 square feet. So for example, if a 5,000-square-foot parcel with a 50% FAR limit came in, they would have a maximum development potential of 2,500 square feet per our FAR requirements. However, if a lot was 20,000 square feet and had the same FAR limit, the allowable FAR on the site would be 6,000 square feet and not 10,000 square feet due to the 6,000-square-foot cap. So staff is seeking guidance on if different or additional unit sizes or FAR limits should be established for SB 9 units. Potential examples of this could include restricting the unit size for any or all SB 9 units to only 800 square feet, regardless of how much FAR a parcel may have. It could be establishing greater allowable unit sizes to incentivize certain types of units or development or development patterns over others. Or it could look like setting higher FAR limits for SB 9 projects and parcels than what is currently allowed by the underlying zoning district. The fourth area staff is requesting guidance on are map extensions. So SB 9 allows, but does not require jurisdictions to increase the initial life of a subdivision map up to four years. So the city's current regulations allow a two-year initial map life before a map expires. And in addition to that, an applicant can apply for up to three two-year extensions of that map, which allows potentially eight years before a map expires. And within the city, it has been exceedingly rare to need an extension or to have a map expire under our current regulations. So staff is seeking guidance on if the initial term of a subdivision map should remain at two years or be increased. The last area staff is seeking feedback on is related to public noticing. So public noticing is not required under SB 9. Our current city practices for public noticing include noticing for all discretionary planning applications. It's a mailed notice to surrounding neighbors. And then no public notice is typically provided for ministerial projects, like building permits. Ministerial building permits noticing... So we only notice ministerial building permits if that project is a small second-story addition to an existing two-story residence that doesn't require a planning application. And that's a very rare occurrence. They don't happen often. But we do have a process in place for doing ministerial noticing. So staff is seeking feedback on if an informational notice should be provided to neighbors of pending ministerial SB 9 projects or if no notice should be provided. So the goal of tonight's meeting is to seek high-level feedback and general policy directions for the areas of SB 9, which the state still allows for some local flexibility. And then with the feedback gathered tonight, staff will begin preparing a local SB 9 ordinance and zoning code updates for compliance with the state law. And while staff anticipates further public hearings on this item in the summer and fall of this year, there is also the potential to hold a second study session before we bring this item back to the Planning Commission and City Council for review and recommendation. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. And myself and my fellow colleagues are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Laura. I guess I'll bring you back to the council for questions. Who wants to go first? Can you... Laura, could you please lower the screen so I can...
Oh, definitely.
Questions from the council? None? Oh, I see one. Councilmember Lee?
Hi, Laura. I have a question about the demolition threshold. So you're saying that our current policy is set at 50%, which requires a special use permit? And so anything below that does not require a special use permit?
Correct. So any development, any demolition less than 50% requires a special use permit. And then if it's over 50%, a special use permit is required. But that doesn't... But that means you can demolish 50%, 75%, or 100%. So there's not a limit on the demolition. It's just when do we perform this special use permit and evaluation? And that happens at 50%.
Okay. So what it... So if our current policy is set at that threshold, presumably for good reason, would it make sense to keep that as sort of a standard across the board? Because it would allow for more consistency and greater feasibility and flexibility, as you were saying, in terms of how homeowners would like to develop their land?
Increasing it to 50% does allow for a little more flexibility in how a project is designed. It might incentivize attached units versus detached units. Because if you can demolish 50% of a structure's exterior walls, it might be easier to attach another structure onto it instead of only 25%. And it would follow current regulation or current practices with other projects. So yes. But that doesn't mean we can't do different thresholds either.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And then I just have another question. Because our... We have three tiers of R1s. And, you know, and they have, you know, very wide-ranging lot sizes. And so I'm curious, have you seen other cities craft sort of different kinds of policies based factoring in the lot size? Is our, you know, is our tiered lot, our one lot system pretty standard? Because it just, you know, when I think about how their... How R1s in certain neighborhoods look and feel quite different than other R1 neighborhoods. So just kind of how to think about those distinctions between neighborhoods and how other cities have done that?
Yeah. We haven't had a chance to in-depth look at other jurisdictions. But there is an opportunity to do a tiered system based on the size of a lot or the type of R1 you're in. That's kind of the high-level direction we're looking for in this venue. Is we... The council says we want to explore the option of maybe doing a tiered system based on the R1 zoning district you're in. Then we can take that feedback back and permeate what that might look like. And then when we come back with either a second study session or a draft ordinance, we would bring those back and some research on what other jurisdictions are doing. But right now, not many have implemented an SB 9 regulation. They're kind of in the same boat. We are trying to do something because it just came online this year.
Okay. And then my follow-up to that question is, you know, we're being asked to make decisions about the zoning code or the zoning, the R1 zoning, excuse me. But is there a way to also factor in, you know, proximity to Caltrain, for example, and refining some of, you know, what would be allowable? Or is it just like, you know, we have to work within the tiers of R1s that we have?
You can be more permissive than what SB 9 allows. But if it's not an SB 9 project, then I don't think that would fit under the umbrella of this project. And then, Manera, you can back me up if I'm...
I can maybe add a little bit. Good evening, councilmembers. Manera Sandeep, Planning Manager. So as far as the tiered system that you're asking about, Councilmember Lee, that's at the discretion of the council. I do know that other cities also may have different R1 zones that have different standards that apply to each, depending on the nature of each zone. So we definitely have that flexibility as long as it's an objective standard that can be imposed and that does not preclude the development of the second primary unit of 800 square feet or the lot split. So the state has established basically a minimum requirement. You know, that's our baseline that we have to adhere to. As Laura presented, that includes the qualifying criteria, the different sets of standards that, you know, are... Cannot be exceeded by a local jurisdiction. But then there are a few areas where the city has some flexibility and we can go above and beyond what the state minimums are.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is, you know, I'm very personally interested in bringing more missing-middle housing online and seeing how we can craft policies that will support the creation of more family-friendly housing units that have more bedrooms. And so, you know, I... The threshold that's currently set, the minimum threshold that's currently set at 800 square feet is really very likely only going to produce, you know, two bedrooms and, you know, zero-to-two-bedroom units. And so I'm wondering, you know, from your perspective, what are some mechanisms or ways that we could think about crafting policies that would encourage the development of more bedrooms and more family-friendly housing stock that might be limited by FAR, for example, or the 800-square-foot minimum?
Yeah. Staff definitely has the flexibility to provide incentives to build three-bedroom units or larger. Off the top of my head, such incentives could be potentially limiting SB 9 units to 800 square feet if it's two bedrooms or less, regardless of FAR. And then if you're three bedrooms or more, you might get a bonus. You might get up to 1,000 square feet. Or you might get a bonus over your FAR. So we can craft... We can craft regulations that would incentivize one development over another as long as we do not preclude units of 800 square feet.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you very much. Any other council members? Questions? I don't think I see any hands. I have a question myself then.
I am looking at issue that was discussed on Slide 12. Laura, and it had to do with the limits, the FARs. And it spoke about...
And it spoke about, you gave an example, I think you showed one on the slide, of a 5,000 square foot lot has a 0.5 FAR, which is 2,500 square feet. And I, I wasn't quite sure of the context. Would SB nine allow that max FAR lot on a 5,000? Let's say there was a lot split, right? One of the lots was 5,000 square feet. And so that's, can you have an ADU in addition on that or a JADU or both?
Yes and no. It's, there's a fine distinction. So to kind of parse out the question, so it's kind of a layering between the, the minimum allowed or allowed by SB nine, which is 800 square foot per unit. And then, you know, layering on top of that are FAR regulations. So you could have a situation in which you can build all of your units and you build them to the minimum and you still have extra square foot, square footage to play with. Then that's when we would layer on our current, our FAR regulations and say, you could potentially build to your maximum FAR. You can make these units bigger if you don't go over your FAR. So that's one part. And then for the subdivision, so there's kind of two types of subdivision projects you can have. You can subdivide and build a duplex or you can just subdivide. When you subdivide and build duplex, which is two primary units, then you're limited to those two primary units under SB nine and cities don't have to allow ADUs or JADUs. The city can, they can choose to do so, but it's not required. The other type of lot split project is just a lot split and you're not proposing two units. So under two primary units, so under just a lot split, you're limited to just two units under SB nine. And those units can be a primary unit, an ADU or a JADU. But it's just two units. But any permutation of those three types of units you can have on that property. So kind of the real question for, for council is, do you want to keep that two unit cap? One. Because whether you're subdividing, any subdivision is just maximum of two units per property. So question one, do you want to have that two unit just be the maximum? Or do you want to increase it? So, and then question two is if you want to increase it, how many units do you want to allow per property? You have the flexibility of allowing three units or four units per property. And then in addition, you also have the flexibility of those four units of deciding what kind of units you're allowing per property. So it could be two primary units, a JADU and an ADU. Or it can be a primary unit, two ADUs, a J, so you can just go through all the permutations. I think what we're asking is what kind of development, maximum development do you want to see on a property? And then if you allow extra units, what kind of extra units do you want to allow? Just ADUs or just JADUs?
And to the mayor, if I could add to that comment, so, so there is the question about the number of units that could be allowed when a lot split occurs. But I think to Mayor Beni's earlier question, you were also asking about the FAR requirement and that would still be applicable to the lot splits as well. So if a 5,000 square foot lot was further subdivided into two lots, each of 2,500 square feet, then the 50% FAR limit would also apply to those individual lots, provided they do not preclude the development of the, the minimum development that's required by state law.
Well, I want to question that because I was also today reading the ADU discussion that we're going to be having later. And on that, I, I kind of understood that if, let's say a lot is a, whatever the square footage is, maybe it's 5,000 square feet and it's already built out with this 0.5 FAR, so it's at 2,500 square feet, but the state still allows an ADU. And it says that we would still then allow an ADU of up to the minimum of 800 square feet. And that would be the cap, actually the minimum size, 800 square feet for that particular instance where a built out already lot is adding an ADU, which we are required to do. So why wouldn't we do something similar on these SB nine split lots? We could, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's, that's my question. Also, Madam Clerk, I see that we're getting some chat messages coming across on the screen here while we're talking. Can we not have that going on while we're actually meeting on these subjects?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't know why that's turned on. I'll see about getting that turned off.
Thank you very much. Okay. Welcome to Councilmember Gofos. Please go ahead with your question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to follow up with Laura. Laura, this was great presentation, great overview of SB nine. We see a clear intent by Sacramento to increase the housing stock in areas rich with transit and also close to where the jobs are apparently. With regards to the lots that are close to transit, you mentioned that we are prohibited from requiring additional parking. And I wanted to follow up on that some more and just reiterate, half a mile from El Camino is a long way, isn't it? I mean, that's, that's a significant area of the city of San Mateo where these units can be built without any additional parking and, and there's really nothing we can do about that. Do I understand that correctly, Laura?
Yes. If a property is within one half mile of El Camino or Caltrain, or Caltrain Station, essentially, additional parking cannot be required. I also have a graphic that I can share one moment.
Did I miss it earlier or?
No.
You were saving it for this moment in this question?
You did not miss it. It just came, we see.
For you, Joe.
Yeah, just for you. Are you able to see the screen?
Yes, so I see circles next to the train stations.
Yes, so I'll zoom in.
I love this. I've always said that San Mateo has five train stations and people don't believe me, but we do, right?
I think we have three. There's one, there's one right outside the northern city limits. But, so we have three train stations. So these green circles are a half mile radius from train stations. And then this green segmented line is a half mile radius or extent from El Camino. So the R1 districts within these areas are highlighted. So in, in North San Mateo, you have part of the R1A, which is in a half mile, with, within a half mile of El Camino. And then you have a few R1Bs from the Caltrain stations. And then moving south, more R1Bs fall within a half mile of El Camino than within a half mile of Caltrain. And same with the Caltrain station to the south. So it's, I don't know how many parcels fall within these confines. We can bring that back when we see you guys again. But those are the parcels that fall within those general confines at the moment.
That's a very helpful graphic. Thank you so much.
And to the mayor, if I could clarify that these are approximations. The way this statute is written, it talks about a half mile walking distance from these areas. That, that's harder to map on a parcel by parcel basis. These are just general buffers that staff produced for, for discussion.
Thank you very much for mentioning that, Manera. Laura, I'd like to ask if you could please forward this to council members since we're going to have to be thinking more after this, as this is going to come back to the council. I'd like to be able to review it and maybe you could add it to the materials that are available to the public on the website also.
Most definitely.
Thank you. Okay. Any other council members? Joe, are you finished?
Yeah, that was the, that was really the thrust. I had a lot of the same questions as Councilmember Lee that she touched on and, and I definitely want to hear what the general public has to say, but that, that helps me for my feedback.
I agree with the five stations. I like that. Okay, well then I think, I don't see anybody else raising their hands. We'll move on to other comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one hand raised. If, Anne Benham.
Yes, I'm, I live in San Mateo Park. So I'm in an area with large lots and smaller lots. But I'm, and I certainly believe we need to increase our housing capacity. But I'm very opposed to this idea of lots in single family home areas being able to be split into multiple lots and suddenly going into the possibility of multiple units on one part of my or my neighbor's property. I think that will totally destroy the neighborhood. I also am very opposed to the 24-foot height limit, which certainly would mean buildings overlooking and overshadowing their neighbors, their neighbors' yards, et cetera. I think that there needs to be a, a variety of ways to achieve this. I'm really not opposed to expansion, but I am opposed to really destroying neighborhoods that are set up to be single home.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sasha Zobrik.
Hi, thank you. I'll wait for the timer.
Oh, you don't need to, you can start.
Yeah, so I just wanted to speak against fears on, on SB nine. I've, I've done some investigating of what some of the qualifications are for parcels and surprisingly few actually make it through all of the, all of the limitations on things like geotechnical hazard, flood hazard, fire hazard. All of those end up sort of limiting the scope quite a bit. And, and I'd be surprised if there's a, a huge number of available parcels. And then on top of that, projects have to actually pencil out and be economical to happen. And so, you know, I don't know that there's a whole lot of incentive to further limit what the state is already providing with regard to SB nine splits or duplexes or whatever. I just have a hard time imagining that there's going to be an overnight sea change. And so my, you know, my position is to basically just do nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Anne Paulson.
Yes, hi. My name's Anne Paulson and I, this is more of a question. I hope the city attorney can address it. SB nine is the law now and San Mateo must follow it. And so I'm wondering if you decide, which I guess you haven't talked about, but it sounds like this might be a decision you wanted to make, that you should limit the size of SB nine units beyond what they're already limited, that is beyond what the floor area ratio, your floor ratios would now allow, whether that would constitute an illegal downzoning. So I guess the city attorney should just look at that and make sure that what you do would be in, would be consonant with the law. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Eric Holm.
Hello, council. I'd just like to say this is incredibly complex and the presentation made my head hurt with all the different conditions and whatnot. So I really appreciate the hard work you guys are doing. One thing I would like to say as you, as you ponder this legislation and how to implement it is take a weekend and go for a bike ride in Palo Alto. There's a lot of really good density of residential houses in Palo Alto that have built up over time and they're actually really quite elegant. So for the concerns of destroying R1 neighborhoods, I think there's a lot of, there, there can be really quite elegant development of small lots. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is John Ward.
Yes, thank you for the time. First thing I'd like to say is in August of 2021, I wrote all the council members and asked what their viewpoint was on SB nine and 10, how they were going to vote. I never received anything from anybody. So on January 7th of this year, I rewrote the letter and the only person that responded was Eric Rodriguez. And he answered the, my letter. Secondly, yeah, I agree with the lady who I believe spoke first, that taking these smaller lots, especially in San Mateo Park where I live, would be a huge mistake if you're going to let the heights requirements go up to two and three stories. This is a residential neighborhood. It's long established as well as many other parts of San Mateo. And I think it should be kept that way. And I hope that you will enforce what limits that you can in, in regards to the legislation itself. But, you know, first of all, this whole area is really not much of an affordable living area. I'm, I'm very grateful to be able to live in the park, but I would think we would need to look at some other areas that are further out from the city, from, from the established residential communities to, to put up affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no other speakers.
Thank you very much.
Oh, excuse me, we just had a hand raised.
Thank you.
Two more. If you could please raise your hands now if you intend to speak. Thank you. Next speaker is Susan R.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Susan Rowinsky, Commissioner on the Sustainability Infrastructure Commission. The views I share with you this evening are those of a private citizen and not those of the commission or the Public Works Department. Just a couple of thoughts here, everyone. I would recommend a second study session to give people an opportunity to hear this again and allow you folks to think about what you've heard this evening. I would also recommend that there is notice on SB nine projects for the adjacent neighborhood. A notice, while there, there is not anything a resident can do, it would be nice to know that additional units, that could be a combination of ADUs, JADUs and a larger home or multiple units would be nice to know. And let me just see here, there was something else. I'm sorry, everyone. I've lost my notes. Ah, on parking. You know, parking, I, I will share with everyone, I have spent several days in the North Central District to help inform me as it relates to the bike path. And if I look at the density of housing and the parking crisis there, I think I would really, really sit back and think about going beyond what SB nine requires, particularly as it relates to parking. I don't think your intent is to turn neighborhoods into the parking crisis. And I'm sorry, Councilmember Lee, but that's what I saw and that's what I heard. And I don't think that's your intent in doing this. So I would recommend staying at the SB nine levels for now and see how everything else is absorbed in this city. And you have absolutely every right to modify it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Frances Bossachi.
Hi. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you to the presenter. Her name is not on the screen anymore. Sorry about that. But I just wanted to say, there were a few places where you guys are looking for high level guidance, demolition, unit size, subdivision map, public noticing, informational notice. What I'd like to say is we already, we residents have been here for almost 30 years, have seen a lot, a lot of great change and a lot of wonderful. have seen a lot, a lot of great change and a lot of wonderful people moving in here because of new jobs, tremendous increase already. So what I beg the council and the policymakers to do is to try and keep it reasonable. Let's not become a super crowded, cars parked everywhere. Assume that everybody's not going to own a car and have, and take the train to go shopping at the supermarket and allow eight units in one subdivide a lot. So please, it is extremely complex and this is why I thank you for all the hard work you're putting in. It's hard for me to be more specific as to what it is that I would like. I'm relatively new at this, but I would, I would really ask, why are we continuing to bring more jobs and more people when we know it's an area of lacking in housing? This is our own doing, bringing jobs. Joe Gothel said Sacramento is trying to put in more housing where there, where the jobs and the transportation is. Well, the jobs is a moving target and it seems like it continues to grow and that's in our control. So in all these five things or four things that we're looking for guidance, please, let's try to understand how to keep it to a point of reasonableness. I mean, why, what do we want to do to our residential neighborhoods? Why, why do we need to create such a crowded space and traffic and public services requirement and all that stuff? So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no other hand raised at this time.
Thank you very much, Madam Quirk. Okay, let's bring it back to the council now and try and provide some additional comments if we can for staff's use. See if we can give them some guidance in terms of our thoughts and feelings regarding this question. I see a hand raised. That council member, Pat.
I just have an additional question. What about this idea of, I thought some other cities were looking at whether or not to make some of the additions affordable, whatever that may be, you know, if it's, the second part has to be affordable, whatever version you might look at. Is that something that we could add on to this?
Does staff have a response for that question?
Yes, I'm happy to start and I see the city attorney also has his hand raised. So to the mayor, staff did look into this and our understanding is that the minimum required by state law is that these units do not have to be affordable. The state law is silent on this matter and to us that, the way we've interpreted, it is to mean that we cannot require affordability limits on these SB nine units. However, should the council want to go above and beyond SB nine to be even more permissive, perhaps there could be opportunity there to look at whether those kind of units were beyond the minimum required by SB nine could be affordable. And Prasanna, please chime in if I misstated anything.
No, I think you stated it completely accurately. I agree with the mayor's comments and bottom line is requiring, say, one of the two units in a duplex to be affordable is not authorized by state law.
So if I may, if it is then, but if you had additional units over and above that, those you could conceivably say you want to see those be affordable?
I think if there are additional units beyond what SB nine actually requires, I mean, I think we need to research that, but it would be at a bare minimum, the SB nine units that are required, local agencies, we believe, could not require those required SB nine units to be affordable.
Okay, thank you very much, Prasanna. I see a hand from Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for our city attorney. Just following up on one of the public comments we received, I apologize if I didn't write down the name of who made the comment, but, you know, there is a lot of, there are a lot of restrictions in terms of downzoning or thwarting the spirit of SB nine. And I just wanted to follow up on her question. All of the options that staff has put on the table of moving the dial one way or the other, those have all been vetted by your office and they are indeed options that are, you know, pretty, pretty, they're not going to be challenged.
We feel confident in the options that have been presented. Of course, as, as the courts start to weigh in on SB nine, as HCD starts to weigh in, you know, we'll have to recalibrate. We may have to recalibrate. I think the question from, I think it was Ms. Paulson, was asking about SB nine and downzoning. I mean, just taking a step back for a moment, there have been a lot of state laws passed in the last several years. I think, you know, one of those in the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, just what creates this idea that the cities generally cannot amend their general plan or zoning to lessen the intensity of housing unless you allow for increased housing development elsewhere in the cities that there's no net loss. That's kind of the basic idea of the general prohibition on downzoning. Now, as that, how that interacts with SB nine, we'll have to look into that, happy to look into that. I don't want to take up any more time here. But if I say that what SB nine requires, certainly we have to implement in state law and then we can research that interaction between going beyond SB nine and what, say, SB 330 speaks to when it comes to downzoning.
Okay, I guess, I guess what I was getting at, and I think where the public speaker was getting at as well, is that we're going to be debating kind of where to move the dial on these five areas. And I just want to make sure we're not, we're not going to be in an area where, where we can't be there legally. So.
Yeah, so just to speak to that, we, again, we feel, I feel confident in the options that have been presented to council for where staff is seeking input. And again, we'll have to see how SB nine gets implemented and interpreted by the courts.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Rodriguez. Any other councilmen?
I just have one follow-up question, sorry.
You can make comments too.
Okay. Well, I did want to ask staff to, to kind of help me picture what the lay of the land is. You know, where essentially the state has acted and now single-family zoned parcels have been effectively turned into fourplexes. And, and so I'm curious how, you know, if we're stepping up density at the, at the bottom level at single-family residence home, or single-family homes, I'm also kind of curious how we can look at this holistically and the graduating some of our density in the R2 areas as well. So there's a part of me that, that wants to kind of couple this conversation together and look at R1s and R2s and, and, you know, creating objective standards in a way that would apply to, to both of them. And so I'm curious to hear your thinking on that and the kind of the work plan.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Lee. I can start. So we can certainly look at how this interplays with the R2 zoning requirements, which already allows for a duplex and my understanding is that the ADUs are also allowed in R2 zoning. At this point, SB nine only applies to R1 zoning districts. Our focus has been, I guess we've just been trying to, to understand and unpack all of the different requirements of SB nine, but we can certainly look into the relationship with R2. I would also like to note that the city has been developing objective design standards that would apply to duplexes. So whether those duplexes are in R2 or in R1 under SB nine, that is something that the department will already be looking at as well to further create some standards and objective guidelines for such development.
Thank you. And just one more follow-up, just for clarification. So are we, like, if we, if we move forward and bring our, bring our codes up to date with SB nine, are they then effectively denser than R2s or have more permissible development than R2s? Like, have we, have we flip-flopped what is allowable in R1s and R2s?
I'll have to look into that, Councilmember Lee. We can certainly get back to you on that. We'll have to look at the minimum densities required in R2, what the minimum lot size requirements are, for example, and how they interplay with R1s. So we'll have to look into that. What the density per acre would be would depend on the lot size.
Okay, yeah, I'm definitely, I, it's, you know, a matter of, I'm very interested in that and, you know, and, and kind of figuring out how, how we can frame these decision points in a way that's kind of relational because it's, you know, we are one city, right? And, and what happens to R1s affects R2s and so forth. So, you know, thinking about sort of the changes to low-density residential as a whole, I think is very beneficial.
Okay, and, and so are those your comments? Does anybody else have any final comments they want to add?
Oh, my final, so going through the list, I will say that personally, I'm in favor of keeping our, our threshold consistent at 50% for demolition, which allows greater flexibility. I, I, I think, you know, I think turning R1s into R4s is, is, you know, is, the fact is, is that what, that's what we have to do, that's what we are going to do. I, I am curious to, you know, think about how the different tiers of, of R1s might be treated differently, especially as they are, you know, in closer proximity to Caltrain. So, you know, if that's something that we could explore and, and think about, then I would be, I was just interested in learning more. As I said before, I, I really favor policies that would encourage the development of, of family-friendly units. And, you know, we know that especially, and this is especially true for the lot splits, that, that will open up a new market for homeownership, for, for our missing middle who, who've really been priced out. So I'm really, you know, I, I see a huge opportunity here and, and I, and I want to make sure that we're crafting the policy in a way that will, that will help families throughout our, our whole kind of life cycle that we have for housing stock will support families throughout our life cycle. And I think that there is a need for three-bedroom units, especially as people are working from home more, having larger units is, I think, an advantage. And I don't have very strong opinions about the MAP extensions. I don't, I think I understand really the nuances there. Public noticing, I think, should, we should continue, especially for, you know, the existing standard of discretionary decisions. And, yes, and I'm looking forward to learning more about the progress of our objective design. And I, you know, I think we all want to see beautiful and elegant architecture throughout our cities. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we, we're moving in that direction. So those are my comments.
Great, thank you. So can't see other council members. I guess you'll have to raise your hand if you want me to see you.
I can go.
Go ahead.
Okay, so first, I just want to say that I agree with Public Speaker Commissioner Rowinsky that we should have another study session to discuss this. I think this is one of these topics where the general public really didn't have an idea that we were going to be talking about this. So I can imagine we're going to have a lot more speakers next time. So I think that would be a good idea. Last year, when we discussed whether or not to take a position on SB nine, I argued for taking an against position because it took the decisions out of the hands of locally accounted, accountable elected representatives. And I recognize that I was a minority in that point of view. We ended up not taking a position and it passed. So now that it's passed, I think first and foremost, we, I believe that we need to respect the law. So nothing like mountain lion sanctuaries or anything like that. I think it's important, though.
You should work with staff. I did.
I think it's important, I think it's important, though, to preserve as much local control as possible moving forward. State lawmakers built in flexibility so local jurisdictions can customize the ordinances to meet the needs of our residents. There is not that much flexibility, but where there is, I think we should take it. So that being said, on the demolition point, I do think that we should keep the state minimum or maximum, I guess, whatever you would call it, of 25% and require, anything above that require a special use permit. And that doesn't mean we wouldn't be approved. We can figure out what that means, but it just wouldn't be ministerially approved. As far as the ADUs go, I think we, we should restrict it and require a special use permit, allowing only two units per lot, per the state flexibility. The state built in that flexibility for a reason, especially for like the areas where we're going to be discussing a lot throughout the evening, parking. Single-family zoned areas essentially have been upzoned to four units per existing lot now. I don't think we need to go beyond that, especially ministerially. Floor area limit, definitely not increase it. As far as, I'm debating here because I think that, you know, taking it down to 800 square feet would be pretty not practical and I, even I think that that's probably not a good idea, but at the very least, keep it the same. MAP extensions, keep it at the current two years. And public noticing, I think that nobody likes to be surprised when bulldozers just show up to your neighbor's house unexpectedly. Even if they can't do anything about it, I think knowing about it ahead of time is important. So I think we should keep all the public noticing and provide, if anything, more notice than necessary. And that's where I stand on, on tonight's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric. Who would like to go next?
I will.
Thank you.
So I, I think what Eric just said is, is correct, that what we're seeing in San Mateo and across the state is R1s being turned into R4s. And for a lot of people, that is really hard. It's agonizing for, for folks who've been in their homes for a long time and seen their neighborhood in a certain way. And they see, they see their community changing. They see all the jobs that are coming. And I, and I, I understand the speaker who talked about, stop all these jobs coming here, which is a very odd thing for council members to be thinking about or saying, trying to stop jobs from coming to their community is, is not what, not what I join the council for. I've seen our economy in San Mateo doing well. I want to see our economy continue to do well. I like the jobs that have come to San Mateo. And even if we stopped jobs from coming to San Mateo, we know that the jobs are all around us in Burlingame and Belmont and Foster City and, and we're surrounded. We have an incredible talent pool of people who are very smart and work for these incredible companies and it drives up the cost of, of living here. It's a different community than I grew up in and that reality is very hard for many of us to come to terms with, but it's true. So now that we see that, now that we have that, I think it's incumbent on all of us to mitigate that, to make this as safe a community as we can, to make it as livable a community as we can, to make it livable in, in multiple, at multiple income levels and provide housing that, that meets the needs of people who are working in all different kinds of jobs in our community. That is our responsibility as council members to really make it a place that people can continue to live, not a place that displaces people, not a place where we see ram. not a place that displaces people, not a place where we see rampant gentrification, but a place that continues to welcome people in all income levels, because we know that that's how you build community. So I see this process as very difficult, because one of the things that's happening is we're losing something. We're losing part of the, to use a word that people don't like anymore, we're losing part of the character of a neighborhood. And we're gaining a new character for those neighborhoods. So it's a very difficult process. I just want to say out loud that I recognize that. And that the state, what the state is doing to communities across California, Sacramento is imposing this, this zoning on us. And to take R one and instantly make it R four is crazy for a lot of people. To to think that next door, there's going to be twice as many people living there is frightening to some people. And I I encourage all of us just to take a step back and recognize that, yes, we need to continue having this conversation in study sessions, but why is the state doing this? Why, why do we see property values skyrocketing? Why is this happening? I, that was all a preface to me agreeing with my fellow council members that that we do, we have to implement this. And I know it's really hard for some of us to embrace, but recognize the problem we're trying to solve. We're not trying to hurt people. We're not trying to destroy neighborhoods. We're trying to build community and and make this a place where people can continue to live. With that having been said, I I would say that I can, I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Lee, on on the demolition limits and the and the FAR limitations. I encourage public noticing. I think information for everybody is good. Subdivision MAP extension, I have mixed feelings on, but I think we can continue to talk about. I think that the thing that is in this that will have the most impact is actually one of the things that we have the least control over, and that's the parking. So that's something we all have to recognize. Those are my comments. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Goldfoss. I think that leaves Councilmember Vice Mayor Papin. Would you like to go ahead?
So, yeah, I I would concur with a lot of the preparatory remarks that have been offered by my fellow council members. This is SB nine is the law. We have a housing shortage. And with those, with the mandates that come with SB nine, we will endeavor as a city and we will build a community that is available for all of us. So with that, I am okay with the fifty percent demolition. I think it gives us some consistency. As far as the.
There we go. Thank you.
Additional ADU and JADU after you've already turned a one into a four, I would have to study that further. I'm just not so sure. I'm not so sure which lot sizes could actually tolerate that. It would get awfully cramped. And if we are, I I do agree with Councilmember Lee, we are trying to house families to a certain degree. And so I would have to take a look at that, especially on some of our smaller lots. And likewise, I'd hate to take a further look at whether or not we should be altering FAR and what that would look like. I just want to see what it would look like and what we could accomplish with it. So I'm not there yet on it. I'd have to see. But you never know what we might find. As for the subdivision map, I don't want to extend it. I like to keep it as is. I want to see if housing is going to happen. I don't want to delay it. And so I don't want to keep extending. If somebody's serious about doing it, they should do it within the time prescribed. Public noticing, I think, is something civilized that we can do as a community, and I think we should. So that's kind of where I stand on each of those. There are different times ahead. They may not be bad times. And let's see what we can come up with. This city is is pretty darn creative. And so I'm I'm looking forward to seeing what we can come up with. And we're all in this together, as I keep saying, and I will keep saying that. And so we'll work together.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Papin. So I want to say that, once again, here's San Mateo in the midst of change. This time, change coming down from the state. It's big change. But this is California, it's the land of change. We've only been here a short time, really, and everything has changed. The modern world here in California has shot from, you know, the short time ago in eighteen fifty, when we started here, to, I mean, leading the world in so many different important industries economically and many other ways. So the change is like the only constant, and it's like a fire hose here in California. And I want to concur with what Diane Papin just just said, which is we have a housing shortage. And I know that because forty years ago, when I was working in construction, building housing in nineteen eighty, the market dropped out, the bottom fell out, housing buildings stopped. And I actually changed my career as a carpenter to working in commercial building. And that's where I built hospitals, laboratories, office buildings, lots of other things. So it's true, I can testify to it. And we know that we have this big affordability gap. We have a huge wage gap. A lot of things that we need to try and account for, and housing isn't the only way that we can do that. But it's one way, and it's the state law now. So we have to figure out how to work with it. So first, I want to say that right now, thank thank staff for the work they did. It's not a simple subject. It's very complex. We're very initial at this time, and like other council members have have called for additional study session. I think we might need two study sessions. I think there are going to be bouts of questions and questions that lead to questions. But we're going to do our best, I think, as a city council, to follow through and find the best path forward for San Mateo. Also, I want to say that the affordable units, regarding what was being discussed about affordable units, I happen to know a few things about economics of building. And what I have seen is that this kind of construction is going to be built. And if it's built, it needs to be able to make some money. Because if private owners buy, own these lots, subdivide them and seek to build, they're only doing it to make profit. If affordability is a required component, it takes away the profit. We will not see applications to build these units. I know I've seen other cities that have been trying to subvert and find ways around SB nine, actually put these kind of measures requiring affordable units into these in an effort to try and kill this. What I know is that the state housing laws now, the Affirmative Further Fair Housing Act and other laws are going to come after those who seek to, cities who seek to allow these basically subversions of the state law in its intent. So its intent here is to build more housing. The housing needs to be not only for individuals, but for couples and for families with kids. So we need units of all different sizes. We need JADUs, which are smaller ADUs, which are not as large as most homes. We need homes. And but affordability will kill the process. So that's, that's not going to happen. That's what our multifamily construction is for in San Mateo. That's where we're able to, where we were able to find the subsidies between that and our inclusionary organs, which requires private developers who build multifamily buildings to include fifteen percent of the units as affordable to members of the public who live and work here at rates that are below market rate at anywhere between thirty and one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income, which are legal terms, and I can explain that, or you can look that up and find out more about it. But that's how we get our affordability here. And the city of San Mateo has currently just finished two projects. One is the Montero Project at Bay Meadows, sixty eight all affordable units, which includes spaces for disabled people and for veterans. The new Kikku Crossing, two hundred and twenty five units, which will be downtown between Fourth and Fifth, next to the railroad tracks, is all affordable because the city owned and still owns the land. It's got a land lease on it. The developer is being allowed to build that project. It will be affordable to people from thirty percent of area median income all the way up to, I think it's a hundred percent. I might be wrong. It might be eighty percent. That's a whole lot of affordability. So I want to go on, though. I made some notes earlier about the things I wanted to discuss here. In my opinion, there really should be no demolition unit. I mean, we're seeking to encourage the construction of housing where people can live. And I think we need to allow more flexibility and provide less rigidity. That's going to make it actually harder to do. So those are my thoughts on that. Regarding the additional ADUs and JADUs on lot splits, we're in a housing crisis. The whole point of this law is to allow us to build more housing. We've had a housing shortage, like I said, since nineteen eighty. When I went to work on the Citizens Advisory Committee in two thousand and one to plan the Bay Meadows development, which is now a very successful transit oriented next use development, the whole point of it was that we were trying to meet the need because of the housing shortage that existed then, which was twenty years ago. But we've had this housing shortage for longer than that. I think we can do better, and I think we need to look more closely at that in our future study sessions. Regarding floor area limits, I think we should consider allowing property owners to exceed the FAR if they add additional bedrooms. Bedrooms are what we're looking for. We need places for kids, parents and kids to live. And we should also consider allowing property owners to build up to certain sizes beyond that specified by state law, even if they exceed their FAR. For example, similar to the state law, the city should allow up to one twelve hundred square foot unit and one eight hundred square foot unit regardless of the FAR, which is exactly what we're looking at with the the ADU ordinance, which we'll be discussing later. That's, that's, those are the provisions that are in there that we'll be talking about. And so I think the key here is flexibility. Regarding subdivision MAP extension, I think in the interest of making it possible for these actual constructions to happen, it's best to allow extensions. And I'm all in favor of public noticing always. I think the public needs to be kept fully aware of what's going on in their neighborhood, be able to weigh in and help shape the project to the extent possible within the law. Okay, thank you. Those are my comments. Staff, do you feel like you have everything you need on that?
Rick, did you address number one?
I think I did. Go back to demolition. Yes, I covered it.
Okay, good. Just making sure.
Um, in general, this, yes, to your question, this is the exact feedback we want. We're looking for a barometer of kind of where we should go. And this has given us kind of a needle to thread on how we're gonna potentially craft an ordinance. So it's enough for us to get going. And then we'll parse out some more options in a second study session, potentially, probably. And then have a more defined package when we do take it for consideration. And when that second study session would occur, TBD at the moment.
Okay, thank you. I want to say, it is very complex, and I think it's really clear that even even me, myself, who sat here staring at this stuff for the last week, still find some of this stuff hard to fully comprehend. So I think the public needs to have every benefit of a study session and maybe even two more, okay, to be able to fully grasp what we're talking about, because I think that's that's the democratic way. So thank you.
Really great job, Laura. Excellent presentation. Thank you so much. And Manira, thank you as always for your help and your leadership.
Okay, so right now it's six fifty four PM. We're going to adjourn this meeting. We'll come back at seven PM with the regular council meeting. We'll see you then. Thank you.